The county called a word, we please stand to the police leaders. I'm going to sign.
My police leaders to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First on item on the agenda will be approval of the medicine of February 2015. It's been moved in second to approve the medicine of February 2018 with the Berkeley call.
State?
Yes.
Addict?
Yes.
Kmart?
Yes.
The lot?
Yes.
Drive.
Yes.
Next item will be state approval of a statement of bill paid in amount of $290,905.23.
Mayor, I'm emotionally approved this technical bills for $290,905.23. Second.
It has been moved in second to prove the segment of bills with the Berkeley call.
State?
Yes.
Addict?
Yes.
Kmart?
Yes.
The lot?
Yes.
Drive.
Yes.
Okay, before we move into the comments, second, the re-proclamation of the city of Kansas, whereas flood safety awareness week is an opportunity to raise awareness about the importance of preparing for and understanding flooding in Kansas and to encourage all citizens to better prepare their homes, businesses, and community for the upcoming flood season. And whereas Kansas Hazard Administration Plan identifies flooding as one of the costly types of natural disaster in Kansas in terms of lives lost, injuries, and property damage. And whereas flood threatens peoples, people, homes, and other property in every county in Kansas. And whereas floods can happen anytime, anywhere, and without any warning. And whereas damage from a flood is not normally covered under a standard homeowner's insurance policy. And whereas summer and fall flooding in 2016, 17, and 18 saw two flood deaths in Kansas and widespread flooding across the state. And whereas the Secretary of Kansas Department of Agriculture, the Kansas Insurance Commissioner, Kansas Assistant General, and Kansas Governor all believe awareness of the dangers and cost of floods is important to all citizens of Kansas. Now therefore, I, John McTiger, Mayor of the City of Edwardsville, Kansas, to hereby proclaim March 11th to 17th as flood safety awareness week in the City of Edwardsville. Thank you. Okay, next item will be request your comments. As being done, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Consider ordinance number 1017 repealing and replacing Article 4.03 sale of alcohol, liquor, and cereal, malt beverages.
Thank you, Mayor. You're being passed out just like everybody's ordinance, I would directly couple red lines back on page nine or 10. Page 9. Page 9. Page 9. Page 9. Let me start by just saying that basically, the primary reason for the change is that there was changes in Kansas statutes on CMB. Long and short of it, they basically said, okay, CMB now includes beer up to 6% and that can be sold in your convenience stores, your grocery stores, et cetera. And at the same time, it said to the liquor stores, who used to be the only ones that could sell beer, you can sell mixers, and the chips, and other things that used to have to be in a separate place in the building, so they had a cash register here and cash register there. So, they kind of gave a little bit to both sides. So, most of these changes that I'm going to go through are really nothing new, other than that it changes because of the CMB. There are a few items in here that, as we're going through our ordinance, we just have a lot of words that didn't mean anything, that didn't really help in the process, so some of it just is simplified and correct. I didn't want to do a red line because it would have been, you basically, just would have been a big red line. You would have been trying to figure out sections. So, some things that maybe you're in the ordinance today is the third section used to be in the sixth section, but what we tried to do was say, what do you do? You come in, you make an application, or review the application, you get a permit, and then you operate. And if you fail to operate properly, you come back before this body and you may have your license revoked, right? So that kind of process, so we said, doesn't make sense that the code ordinances be pretty much the same way. So, that's really what we've done here. What I think is going to be the easiest thing to do is go through the ordinance fairly quickly and just highlight or tell you there's a change or no change. And so, we're just going to start, and I'm going to go through it by these sections, so you see them highlighted in bold caps. So, in definitions, mainly, we just added updates to the definitions so that it's clear what those are, they coincide with state law. The one definition, so we obviously have to change CMB definition, say 6%. The other thing is we used to have a definition for general retailer and limited retailer. The problem is, there's no definition without anywhere in state statute, but I can't figure what the difference between one or the other is, so nobody else could even. LKM has an image in there proposed, mainly, I think what it means is, do you sell liquor like at a liquor store, or do you sell liquor at a convenience store, or do you sell beer when you are at a restaurant? So, we just really took all that out and said, you know, you're either, you're basically a retailer, right? I mean, if you're selling in retail, it doesn't really matter where. So, really, there's not much difference in the definitions, other than we added a few to make it very clear. License required, there is nothing new there except for where the effect of April 1, you can sell CMB. So, the other languages are the same. Under application for license, there's no change, so that's the same language. Under application and license fees, we have added in there, there was some question we were able to clarify late in the week, we don't currently require an application fee, so there's a license fee. But most things, you come in and you have an application, there's some fee, it could have cost you to go do the background search and all that, so, you know, we sent it over to the police department, and they do the background search, and the person comes back, and they don't pay, they don't meet the standards, or it's the fire department, and their facility won't meet, or whatever. So, we haven't set that, we'll do that at a later time, but we're putting language in there that would allow for an application fee in addition to the license fee. So typically, what happens, they came in, got a license, paid the license fee, and then didn't pass, we have to give them the money. That's kind of how the statute is written, is you have to refund the money, even though you've done all the work, you know, there's no way to do that. We're not talking about some exorbitant number, I mean, you would probably talk to us $25, $15, something fairly small. Under the license approval qualification, there's nothing really different there from our current ordinance, because most of that is statutory, but it becomes difficult knowing if they're an individual, or a corporation, or LLC, or a partnership. And a good example was recently with, and I don't know, has that come up yet? So, we're in process of Jacksons. So, they're out of change of ownership, so they have to get a new license. Well, the way it was written currently is, well, you had to live in the county, and you had to live in the state, and do all these things, but if you're an LLC, it's different, and if you're a corporation, it's different. So, there's nothing in our ordinance really deviated between type of person that's getting the license, and so, if you're a corporation, you don't necessarily have to live in, who's living in county. So, this rewrite of this section is pretty well straight out of statute, and that's the city attorney kind of pulled all this together. So, if somebody comes in, they're an individual, we'll follow the individual, if they're an LLC, we'll follow the LLC. So, just clarify those items.
How do we monitor the ownership portions?
Well, they have to make application each year. Beyond that, I'm not sure how we would necessarily.
They have to look their, how the LLC or the, or the application, at least in the state.
Well, you're talking about kind of application, yes. So they do have to send articles that they're holding to corporations. As to restrictions of location, I'm trying to figure out, order, restriction of location, the only difference there is we added the word hospital, as far as you can't be within 50 feet of a hospital. Now, we've had 50 feet, one section that said a 50-foot radius, another place that just said 50 foot from the property line, it's probably the same, so. We added hospital, I'm not sure my hospital was in there, we don't have to have hospital in there, obviously, we don't have facilities that meet that. There is an option that can be waived at 50 feet, I can tell you that 50 feet is pretty short, most, a lot of places are 200, 200 feet are probably the more common. The only one we've ever had where we had a question was, is up here at the Philip 66, because it sits across the street from the Christian church, but the road itself is 100 feet. So, we take the position, at least on this 50 feet, we measure from property line to property line. So, it's really the property line of, say, the church, we cut out 50 feet all the way around the property line. If property line of the selling business was inside that, we would deny it unless they got an exception. That's something we can change, it's not set by statute. Obviously, I think you have to be careful if you go too far astray, and if you say you can't be within 5,000 feet of any of these things, you're probably going to get challenged, because you might make it where you couldn't have a liquor store in the urban city, but there is, that is an area that could be adjusted if that's something you want to do. But that's, we added hospital just to be consistent.
With school, the definition of school, could private or public?
I'd have to define.
Charter also. We have, can you talk about daycare?
I don't believe daycare we cover, but.
It would be under school, but that would certainly be something, keeping in mind what kind of daycare, if you're talking about a home daycare, then that changes a lot of boundaries for businesses then, what if you're talking about an established, separate, built daycare, so you probably want to think about how you're going to define that, could as well have an impact.
As our current code is, we do not, the only things we have in the current code relative CMB is church, school, or library. We add hospital, again, just to be consistent with the alcohol portion, it says hospital, church, school, and library. Can't tell you why, it's the way it was in the ordinance.
Interesting to know if other communities include daycare, is there any there?
I just kind of looked around, because I was interested in what hospital was in there, and I didn't find any that had hospital in there, so that's why I was looking, I didn't see daycare designated. Now, they may have something else in their code somewhere, where they consider, say, l'apetite a school, or something like that, so they may have something that brings that in. But I didn't see something where it's split up.
I guess my question would be, like, in future development, if we're developing one here, and we want, and we get a l'apetite, and right next door is where it's put in a liquor store, in the same building, I don't think that's really appropriate. So, maybe we want to get out in front of it just a little bit, so we're proactive, not reactive, with our, you know, as development grows and.
I will say, I don't say all, but, so any restaurant, or a drinking establishment, is going to have to go through the SGP process under our zoning ordinance as well. So, they would first have to meet zoning regulation, I'm not saying that that would be prohibited, but it will have to go through the zoning process for SGP, if it's a restaurant or a drinking establishment, where liquor is sold, because that part of our zoning ordinance, in order to get a license, given a drinking establishment license, they have to be compliant with zoning. So, the state calls us and says, is this location compliant with zoning for this use? And our answer is, it'll require a special use permit, when the applicant, once you've obtained your special use permit, then we'll process the rest of your application. Now, whether that department picks up daycares, or other kinds of facilities, I don't know, in that case, it's very simple. I will say, we don't, you know, it's not an absolute, we have to adopt this tonight, which is kind of part of the reason I presented it to you this way. So basically, the biggest change in the law is effectively March 1, any place that has a CMB license can store beer, so beer up to 6%. So they're already permitted by state law to store it. If it's the April 1 sales, I don't know, if they already have a CMB license, April 1, they can start selling beer without any further actions from the city.
Yeah, I don't want to hold that business up, but I don't also limit ourselves to where we're reactive and still proactive.
And we don't, you know, there's nothing, you know, there's nothing pending that these changes would impact. I mean, we have one pending liquor license, that what we're doing won't change the outcome about one way or the other. I mean, they're in the SGP process right now, if there's issues, it's probably going to be with the SGP process, being certain requirements, assuming they pass that, they're only considered a drinking establishment under state law, often under state license. Again, we don't have much regulatory control over those items.
I may be the only one that, yeah, that's concerned, but it just seems like something that we, we certainly want to protect children, and not mix those type of businesses so closely together, much like we don't want to mix these others.
My input on that would be that, and here would be a good example, would be the henhouse at 82nd Parlow, there's a l'apetite right next door to the grocery store that sells alcohol, and you wouldn't want to prohibit, I mean, you're talking about property line to property line, you know, and they have their own facility, own, you know, large fenced-in area, so I don't know that I would necessarily agree with wanting to prohibit it being like near school.
It might, it might be something that needs, I mean, that could take some more review than, you know, I mean, just as an example, the micro brewery slash drinking establishment license that we are pursuing, or being pursued, is in the Plaza West Development. Two doors down from that, in the Plaza West 2 Development, is the dance class, which obviously has children there, I mean, I'm assuming children being, be one of the age 18, right, but they have, I know they have kids from very small kids to all the way up in those dance classes, so we prohibit that, so, you know, I have an answer, it just, it probably deserves some further discussion.
My feeling is, if it's more of a state regulated school, a private business, I don't know that we really need to get in depth into the process of prohibiting within 50 feet of a private, private business.
Right.
That's the only caution I have, I understand what Chuck's saying, but my feeling, and I may go along with what Stice is saying, is, once you start regulating with another business rather than a, than a state facility, or a church.
And I, is the, is the issue about schools, churches, and, not possible, schools, churches, and.
Library.
Library, is that state statute? I think that are schools and churches.
No, I believe that those are kind of local regulations that have taken place. There's nothing mandating that you do it, that I can find in a state statute. It's local preference, and then also, what makes up your town? I mean, you have to keep in mind, you don't want to not permit a business, because if you did too big of a distance requirement, you couldn't have one anywhere. So, you have to.
Well, when the example Chuck gave, with the grocery store that moves up into the 6%, there's a petite right next door, you can't prohibit them from selling 6% liquor just because there's an existing daycare, it's not a state facility, that's my.
Another example would be the Legends, where they have a West Side Church inside the Legends, and there's multiple liquor-selling places, restaurants, that are within that footprint of the Legends.
I will say, and maybe this is partly the reason this language is in there, it does say, at least related to CMBs, which would be CMB and up to 6% beer, that that 50-foot radius can be waived by the county. So if you had a situation like that, you know, I, over my time, there's a lot of, you know, I was in one place, and it was 250, you know, they said 250 feet, and everybody's hardly getting creative, so they built a fence between the buildings, and I said, well, because I think it was from door to door, or something, you know, so you had to walk around with the fence, even if I went from here to here, it was 25 feet, right, but they just built a long fence, so the person had to walk around the fence to meet whatever the requirements are. So there's generally always somebody to try to find a way to push whatever that requirement is, so.
And this isn't new.
Yeah, this is not new.
This has been in the ordinance.
Yeah.
And also, a church coming in would not make those other businesses forced out.
It preexists.
Right, right.
Well, we're talking, we're just talking package sale on premises to take home.
Well, we have, the language is there. So it could be, so CMB, cereal and beverage, right, which is, those licenses are issued by cities. So, we're talking about, it could be off-premise, so if it's, mainly what you're talking about is your convenience stores, or CMB, right? Grocery store and convenience stores. You also have Roscoe's as a good example, they're a CMB retailer, but they're an on-premise consumption. So, they too have to live by these rules. Then you move into liquor sales, so if we take the liquor store down here, that's a packaged liquor sale. There are separate regulations to them, but much of what they do, they're state licensed, so they have to get an occupational permit from the city by statute. And you have some, but not as much regulatory control, and if it's a drinking establishment, so your traditional bar, or if it's a restaurant that sells liquor, you have some control under your zoning ordinances, but you're not going to have it in your CMB or alcohol beverage. And that's where, that's where the SGP comes in, that's where the cycling comes in, again, you may have a strip center, and they have, you know, let's just say, they have a restaurant, and then something, and maybe, I mean, I've seen, and I don't place in, you have a liquor store right next door to it is a fairly large daycare, I mean, it's just.
Yeah, that's right, or a club, and Charlie Mr. Farm, right?
Yeah, exactly.
And you're following your kid at the same time.
I can name a number of places that are like that.
It's in the same strip mall.
Right.
High V drive.
It may be something to look at, but right now, it's not, it's been.
Not a concern to others?
Yeah, I don't think there's any problem with 50 feet in there.
Well, you know, if it comes up, we can, we can address it. On license to be posted, obviously, no change, you have posted licenses. Business regulations, we didn't change anything related to hours, we changed how it was worded. So, the way it's currently worded, it says, you can't, it's really, you can't sell between the hours of midnight and 6:00 a.m. But what you're really saying is, when can you sell? And so, we simply changed it to say, Monday through Saturday, you can sell CMB from 6:00 a.m. to midnight, it's on-premise, on-premise or off-premise. And on Sunday, because this city years ago adopted sale, Sunday sales, you can do that from 6:00 a.m. to midnight, if you're selling food products. So, you can't sell on-premises. I don't know when you would have a situation where the first part would act, you would have to, you would have to be a place that you consume beer only, nothing else, is the only time, A, you come in Monday through Saturday, and then on Sunday, you serve food. I'm not really sure that litifier is ever applied. So normally, it's, you know, it's a restaurant, they don't want to give a liquor license, but they want to sell beer, right, and again, I'll take Roscoe's as an example, and they're open Monday through Sunday, they can sell beer, as long as they do it in the hours that are high regulation. Yeah, we didn't change any of those hours, we didn't modify any of those hours, that's basically word for word what we have. We did, I don't know, we modified a little bit, how do you determine the 30%, mainly, it was on an annual basis, we said on a quarterly, which I think follows closer to statutes, that again, if some, we have a right to say, show us proof that you're selling at least 30% of your total sales is non-alcoholic beverage, not CMB, fairly standard, I have nothing new here. Just for reference, again, our ordinance was kind of, it was kind of difficult, but you can't buy CMB, or liquor, you're on CMB, you cannot buy down Easter Sunday, so, sorry. So there's that. Again, anytime it's a drinking establishment, a lot of this kind of goes out the window, so if it's a restaurant, you know, there are pieces of it, but if it's a drinking establishment that's selling alcohol, then they can obviously sell beer. So, that's the biggest change there. Really, there are no, there are changes through the rest of Division 2. So, as far as Division 2 goes about, you know, the police chief has the authority to do a short-term suspension, so that would be a base where there's, you know, you walk in, and there's a bunch of 15-year-olds sitting there, are drinking, I mean, they pretty much take action immediately, but you can't revoke a license, that comes back to the body, and then you would have to do that. So none of that changes, so everybody knows. All the prohibitive things on conduct, I know that's some funky language, no change, pretty standard, been there, going to be there. Division 3, so now we're into liquor, and so this is things other than beer up to 6% and, you're really not going to see CMB anymore, I mean, you're not going to see people selling 3.2 beer, because why would you, I mean, from, I have to go buy this beer, and then I got to go buy this beer, I can tell you that Bud Lighters and all the big distributors are going to say, here you go. And I don't think anybody's going to really go and sell two different products when they can sell one product. But still, we have a lot. Again, we added the CMB language to say that, including beer up to 6%. On the hours, this was one area where we got into some discussions. So, back in 2003, we adopted a charter ordinance, which among other things, allowed Sunday sales of alcohol. And in that ordinance, it said that on Sundays, you could sell alcohol between noon and 7:00 p.m. But if you go to the section where it says sale on Sundays and holidays, in 2005, we adopted the ordinance, because there was a change in statute, that basically said, you could sell to 8:00, and locally, you couldn't restrict, you could restrict the hours, but not less than 8:00. So basically, our internal, our code is just completely unchanged. So, here's the easiest way to put it, you, if there's sale alcoholic liquor at retail store down here, use them, right, they can operate between 9:00 and 11:00, Monday through Friday, or Monday through Saturday, excuse me, and on Sunday, they can operate between noon and 8:00. So, retail liquor is where they do it. They can sell on Sundays with the exception of Easter, just like CMB, and they cannot sell on Thanksgiving or Christmas. That's new language, but that's statute, so you can't buy alcohol on Easter, Sunday, Thanksgiving, or Christmas. You can buy CMB on Thanksgiving and Christmas in the store, sells to you. So, if you still need a beer Christmas afternoon, and the store's open, you could buy that, but you couldn't come down to the liquor store and buy that liquor.
Yeah, off-premise consumption.
Right, right.
Because you could still go to a bar, or a restaurant.
Yeah, bars, yeah, that's a drinking establishment, and it's regulated under state statute. We don't regulate that. That's really it. Again, mainly, we took a lot of language out, it was just repetitive, but we don't need to say that on the license or the application, you've got to have these 20 things. The agency gives you, gives you the form, that's what you fill out. And we can ask for whatever we need to administrate, we don't need to outline every detail of the process. When we get an application, it goes to the police department, the fire department, and the building official, right? And zoning, so it's got to be properly zoned, the building's got to be, meet fire codes, et cetera. It's got to meet fire, that they're doing in the restaurant. And the police department does all the required background checks that are necessary under state statute. So we took out all of that kind of stuff in the ordinance, because it already is, it doesn't matter.
I'm not reading this right on, you're page nine?
Right.
Where it says, "The sale of alcoholic liquor shall only be between the hours of 9:00 AM or after 11:00 PM."
That should be, that should say between the hours of 9:00, well, it does say where, it should say between the hours of 9:00 AM and 11:00 PM, or after. We'll strike that.
There you go.
We'll strike that. You were correct.
One. Make a motion to adopt ordinance 1017, replacing our rule to approve the sale of alcohol during summer.
With his amendments.
The hours correction.
Yes.
It has been moved in second to adopt ordinance number 1017 with the amendments. Would the court please call a roll?
Second.
Yes.
Adam, Kahr, Alot, Tri.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda will be consider recommendation from the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board regarding the selection of Wichita State University Public Policy Management Center for the development of 2019 Parks Master Plan.
Thank you, Mayor. My friend, City Council, just to give you a quick review on this item. In October 2018, Parks Direct Advisory Board made a recommendation that we move forward with soliciting firms to develop a comprehensive Parks and Recreation Master Plan. The City Council formally authorized us to move forward with an RFP in November. At that time, we reached out to planning agencies, we reached out to universities who had landscape architecture programs, public administration programs, Parks Direct Management programs, and then kind of the usual suspects that we see, that what we're doing is different planning, plan developments. From that, we got five respondents, Dick Work Consulting, Greenplay, Land Works, Berio, and then the Wichita State University Public Policy Management Center. An interview panel was convened that included myself, city planner Dave Knopick, Parks Direct supervisor Mike Martin, and then Edredale Elementary principal Trace Copey. We interviewed those five groups throughout February, and from there, we presented a, we were lucky to have, you know, kind of a good mix of perspectives from these different groups that we heard from. We presented our summary of the interviews to the Parks and Rec Master Plan. Really, they're, because they're primarily a policymaking group, their big distinction between how they wanted this plan to develop and move forward was either a focus on things like landscape architecture and site development and facilities assessment, or more long-range financial planning and program evaluation, and things like that. So really, a kind of an infrastructure-based, development of an infrastructure-based plan, or development of a kind of a more policy, financial-based plan. And it was the recommendation of the Parks Direct Advisory Board that we move forward with the Wichita State proposal, which was more in that long-range financial planning, program review, that perspective more so than the landscape architecture and, you know, trying to find sites for different plans, and things like that. So to give you a kind of an overview of their proposals, including your packet, but to summarize it, kind of broken up into six different parts. The first one being the data gathering portion of it, where WSU staff would seek out and look for influencing factors, and build kind of a needs assessment based on the data that they can collect from existing plans that have been put together, staff, the data that we have as staff members, related to the Parks and Recreation programming, and then what's going on in surrounding communities, to see, you know, where are the areas where we're competing against places, where we are doing well, where we're not doing well. The next part of that, after that, that they start doing that data gathering, would be to convene a, what they recommended, the steering committee. In my discussions with them, what we may end up doing, if we decide to move forward with them as the planning group for this effort, is to name the Parks and Rec Advisory Board as the steering committee, to give them a little bit more agency with the plan, with perhaps the addition of maybe a representative from the school district, so we're making sure that they are included into the development of the plan as a move forward. The next piece would be, there is a site analysis, and it kind of needs an opportunities assessment portion of the plan. It's not the central, you know, driver of the plan, but obviously, if we're looking at a Parks and Rec Master Plan, part that is going to be site analysis, and just taking side of what we have, the deficiencies that we have, and based on the data gathering portion of it, you know, where are we, where are we going to start investing in some of our Parks and Recreation programming, both in terms of facilities, and then what we offer for, you know, kids and perhaps adults to do. The next part is going to be the public engagement piece. They presented kind of a draft calendar on there that we'll finesse a little bit as we move forward. So that would involve both reaching out to, obviously, members of the public, what we've talked about right now, if we can swing it, is to have the WSU folks be a part of, or at least have a presence at the citywide cleanup, because obviously, that's a, that's an event that has a lot of public buy-in, if they want to have an event where they're going to, you know, touch a lot of different ethical residents, that's probably the best one that we're going to have within the timeframe of the plan. And also, once it's scheduled, strategically meet out with, you know, representatives of the school district, representatives of the Bonner Springs, and really just kind of be, have some boots on the ground, see what else is, again, what else is going on in the surrounding areas. And also, with the public engagement piece, is during the data gathering, a part of this process, is they'll, they'll kind of develop a, a public engagement kit that they can, they've used this strategy before in other plans that they highlighted in the interview process, but essentially, what they would do is provide that kit to, you know, the Kiwanis Club, or the Rotary Club, or any organization that they're, they haven't had a chance to come and actually have a chance to sit down with them, but they provide them that information, so they can kind of facilitate their own meeting on, you know, if they had input into the plan based on the data that WSU and their staff has been able to gather. They've found that that is a more effective way of getting kind of unfiltered public engagement reactions to these types of plans, rather than, you know, let's hold a, let's hold a town hall meeting in City Hall and hope that, you know, we'll probably get the usual suspects who come to, you know, other functions like this. So this really puts some of that, again, that agency and ownership of the plan, of developing the plan, into some of the groups and organizations that might be stakeholders in it. After that, to do the, the public engagement piece of it, that's really where their staff comes into play and starts developing the plan based on what they've heard, the data that they've collected. And then after that, what they're hoping is sometime in early August, they would present that plan back to you, the City Council, and probably hold some kind of community engagement piece to show the finding of that, of that plan, similar to what the 45232 effort did, where they had a data gathering effort, and then a couple of different community engagement pieces in between. It launched that program in the end, and then at the end, they kind of presented, here's our findings, and went through that, both with public and then the City Council as a body. In the adopted 2019 budget, there was $25,000 allocated to the development of this plan. It was actually originally allocated in 2018, and it was never, based on the timing of, when we issued the RFP, it wasn't included in the, it wasn't, those funds weren't expended in 2018. But they are, they were included in the 2019 budget in that they affected the cash balance, the year-end cash balance of the special sales tax fund for 2019. So in the, in the budget book that you have, the cash balance for 2019 kind of includes that $25,000 expenditure for the park plan. The proposal that WSU submitted included a $24,963 figure, that we presented that to the, and we review that with staff, and now we're presenting it to you, with formal authorization to report with Wichita State for the development of this plan.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we adopt the recommendation of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for the selection of Wichita State University Public Policy Management Center for the development of 2019 Parks Master Plan for a cost not to exceed $24,963.
Second.
It has been, okay, go ahead. Hey, what were the other bids? I just find it kind of odd that they came in just, you know, 17-year-olds.
Well, there was some dollars. So initially, how the process worked is, we put the RFP out, with the, here's our kind of general scope of what we want to accomplish. And then the firms kind of presented, you know, here's what we can do based on that scope, here's kind of a unit price based on that. And they were all within that, you know, 25 to 32,000 range. And then, you know, if we would have went with a different firm that was at a higher than 25,000, because that 25,000 is what we've budgeted, we would come back to that firm and say, you know, we like what you, what your scope has, but things are kind of, this is the parameter that we want to work with, so let's, let's firm up that scope to get within that $25,000.
I can tell you that on Land Works, because I looked at, the top two are Land Works and East Coast, but I didn't sit in on all of the qualities, but Land Works had done a Park Master Plan for Edredale, and it was $7,000. I think because those firms tend to be more architectural-based, so a lot of architectural drawing in the plan, which at some point, we'll need that, but probably this isn't the time for that.
I was going to suggest something to you, since they're kind of picking meetings, picking and choosing where to go, that we could at least announce a couple of them, so that if the public's not already involved in forms, they might not know anything about it, can I just like to give you an offer?
Yeah, public engagement, they really stress that is what they want, is one of their strengths, and, and some of the plans that they presented as an example, that is something that they excel at, and interpret even that data that they get from.
So I noticed their goal was 20% or 900 residents that they wanted to connect into, into that public engagement, or, you know, that's kind of their target. And if you get a 20% response in that public dollar price, it will be very happy.
You might want to reach out to the churches too, for the segment.
Okay, so no further questions. It has been moved in second to approve the plan, and I've already announced that, so would the court please call a roll?
Second.
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Kahr?
Yes.
Alot?
Yes, Tri.
Yes.
Next item, consider authorizing city manager execute a project programming request for the Kansas Department of Transportation for the Riverview Crossroads Project.
Here, if it's all right, I'll just make this presentation.
Go right ahead.
Very quick, as you know, we've been going through the process of this project, as we refer to as the Riverview Crossroads Project. We were awarded $3 million in STP federal funding. You have to match that, basically, it's an 80/20, so you have to basically, for those items that are considered participating, you have to have 3.75 million participating, you get the 3 million. The non-participating, you have to talk about, which are engineering, right-of-way acquisition, utilities, those are typically the things. What this basically does is, the next step, it says to KOC, please assign this with a federal number, and put it into planning for the 2021 fiscal year. It doesn't change any prior commitments. Actually, the overall cost is less than what we originally set a few months back, because when the STP, when we first did it, we requested additional STP funds more than we got. So this number is updated, a total of 4.6 million is updated. I will say that those non-participating items may come down, we already know on the design engineering side, that it's less than that, as you know, for the contract. You know, utilities are always up there, and right-of-way, because we don't have right-of-way maps yet, we make some assumptions as to number of land, and we assume that all right-of-way will have to be acquired, and throw some numbers at it, so those numbers possibly can be less than what they are at this time. At this point, we would recommend approval of the project programming request with KOC, so we can keep this in a timely fashion.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
On location, product, limits, description, and scope of work, it talks about going down 2,000 feet down 110th Street, but it doesn't give directions east or west on Riverview. Is that, where's that number coming from?
The 2,000 feet or the east and west?
Or the east and west, you know, because it says
Right.
To improve 110th and Riverview Avenue intersection.
Right.
And then it gives a, an actual dimension of going south, but it doesn't say anything about going east or west.
Well, yeah, and so when we revised it, I mean, it basically, what's it take to tie that intersection into the existing roadway, so a few hundred feet, I guess, but as you know, the council authorized additional engineering
Right.
For concept. We don't, I mean, we could add that under a KOC project, and it would just all be non-participating, but we probably don't want to add it as a KOC project, because the cost would be higher, so.
Right, just 2,000 feet, where does that get us?
Approximately speaker row.
When you say approximately, is that 1,900 feet, is that 2,100?
I think speaker row's around 2,500 feet. I'd have to look back and look. We assume there's going to be a taper dam, so it's going to be, I mean, probably the thing most people, it's past Vicki Patterson's drive point, so the first driveway will be a residential driveway, the Osmond's property, the next one will be her driveway.
The next driveway is the driveway that goes up to Loop Bird Lane.
Well, that's true, but before, actually, you get the speaker before you can get to that, it's slightly south of that, probably. We won't get the speaker, likely we won't get the speaker. They are relatively flexible, I mean, it's a broad thing, so if we came, I think quite often, if we came back and said, well, we're going to shorten this up, because we need to go 300 feet or 500 feet down Riverview.
Gotcha, okay. That's what I was wanting to know, that flexibility is there.
It's not a fixed area, as long as the, because our original project, which still was in there, said we were going to, you know, go approximately 2,000 feet south and 2,000 feet to the east. We had to cut out somewhat the dollar amount to the east to meet the dollars, but we can make revisions to that as we go along with you. You know, if we get in there, we decide, we either want to go farther south to a point, right? Sure, we don't do that, or we say, you know what, we really only need to go 1,500 feet south, or we want to pick up 300 feet to the east in the intersection.
That's my only thinking was, is just that we, the place that we
We could revise that.
That we were going to do engineering study
Yeah.
To the east, would be smart to at least be able to have that option to reach that point, if that's what we decided to do, which would be that return road into the middle south.
And we, and we could, we could add that, I mean, I mean, just to, I mean, just to say south to approximately whatever, and east is neither, I mean.
I'm okay with the way it is, I mean, I'm just, I was just curious, just to make sure that there is some flexibility on what we do, if nobody's sitting there saying that you, you said 2,000 feet, and you're going to reach that 2,000 foot mark, why is it 1,800 that we decided, that lets us go 200 feet farther on Riverview? So that's all.
I may just say, at east on Riverview is necessary. You're just giving me the
Well, as necessary, then let's go all the way to 98.
If $3 million will get it that far, I'm going to maybe grapple it, but I don't even think you could grapple for 3,000 feet, or 3, or 2,000, or whatever it is.
Anyway, we need a motion taken for this. Is that correct?
Yes. You're just authorizing the entrance in this project program request.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to authorize
Mr. Mayor, make the motion to authorize the City Manager to execute a project programming request with KDOT for the Riverview Crossroads Project.
Second.
It has been moved in second to authorize the City Manager to execute a project programming request with KDOT Transportation for the Riverview Crossroads Project. Would the clerk please call roll?
Stikes?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Kayhar?
Yes.
Alott?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Okay, next item, we consider Resolution 2019-05, authorizing Edwardville Fire Department to enter into reciprocal investigative intergovernmental local agreement with Eastern Kansas Multiple County Task Force.
Mayor of Kansas City, we'd like this Resolution 2019-05. This is just an update, since 1996, the City of Edwardsville has participated in this Eastern Kansas Multi-County Task Force. It was originally approved with Resolution 1996, Act 2019. 1996, Act 10, was recently updated, Resolution 2017-90 in December of 2017, when the Miami had it come up. What has happened now, before you might have just drove this, is there has been a change in the KSA from 12-2904 to KSA 12-2908. There's no law or interlocal agreement, there's a contractual agreement, it does not cost us anything, but it does not require us to come in front of every town we add another municipality or agency. This is just an agreement to where our investigators work with one another when we have a large fire or a small fire, depending upon what we have. We've utilized this investigative task force on recent arson fires within our city, and our investigators have gone over on some large fires, such as the one that occurred in Oakland Park, where they had 25 homes in two apartment complexes. This does not cost us anything to participate in this task force, nor do we have any expenditures that we have to set there, and the point by it was part of this, and we always have the obligation, the opportunity to say no, KDOT is in support of the mission. This is all, this request is, is just to update the new number question for the new KSA. If there's any questions they might have, I'll be more than happy to answer them at this time.
Make a motion to adopt Resolution 2019-05, authorizing Edwardsville Fire Department to enter into reciprocal investigative intergovernmental local agreement with the Eastern Kansas Multi-County Task Force.
Second.
Okay, I'm just going to say it's been moved in second to adopt Resolution 2019-05. Would the clerk please call roll?
Stikes?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Kayhar?
Yes.
Alott?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Do you make a motion?
Yeah.
I don't think it looks great, but it's, I... Well, 8:20 should be sufficient.
Mr. Mayor, make the motion, we move into an executive session and return to general session at 8:20. In regards to discussing data related to financial affairs or trade secrets of corporations, partnerships, trusts, and individual proprietorships as of the ordinance number or KSA 754319B4.
Motion in second to go into executive session until 8:20. Would the clerk please call roll, I'm sorry.
Stikes?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Kayhar?
Yes.
Alott?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yeah.
Would the clerk make a motion, please?
I'm going to return to regular session.
Make a motion in second to return to regular session, would the clerk please call roll?
Sorry, who is the second? Stikes?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Kayhar?
Yes.
Alott?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Thank you. All right, we'll move into advisory board.
I don't have much, Mayor, two things, I've got some questions, and maybe I've missed something. One, as I said to someone earlier, I did meet with the KPS, KBS partnership, which involves a number of people, including the architects that did our facility study. So they intend, as part of the process, that they're supposed to return to this body within 90 days and kind of give their report to say, we think we can go forward, we think we can't go forward. And then the next phase would be some kind of a document agreement, and then at some point, there's real money on the table, yes. I met with them, they are still very eager, they have been doing their diligence from utilities and site stuff, and costs, and talking to potential tenants, and really doing their homework. They are scheduled, or we'd like to come back, and I think the timing is right, to be here in the first meeting in April, which I can't see that far.
The 8?
The 8, so they're, so we expect they'll come back on the 8th and make presentations to the council, so to give you an update on that. When I just handed out to you this adopt this spot, sorry, we just printed these here, so they're not the fanciest things, but I got approached by the Assistant County Administrator, perhaps me and the City Manager of Bonner Springs, that they were doing this project, and again, it says Windott County, and said, well, would your cities be interested in participating in this? And I got a little bit of information, and you have it in here, but basically, our agency was, sure. Basically, what it is, is an opportunity for groups, and they would manage this, right, to adopt spots where we have trouble, or we have troubles with illegal dumping, land maning properties, which we have a couple, or parks, or, you know, cemetery, or those kind of things. Now, obviously, not saying we have groups for all those, but they would basically help market maning do this program, as a countywide program versus individual cities doing it. I told them, I think it's great to be doing countywide community cleanup and pickup for this place. So I told them, I mean, I said, yes, I don't see any issues, obviously, there's always the details, there's no, you know, no cost associated with the legal things, not people liable for what, so just wanted to bring that to your attention, and that's a good opportunity, I think, and I don't, you may want to touch on this, Kayhar, about the discussions you've been having about the mobile grocery in your report, but I'd be happy to say that you love this. That, that's all I have right now.
Thank you, Mayor. Captain Short, you got anything?
Yes.
Chief?
As official revenue earlier, we got the AFG grant for the 1.1 million dollar air packs about a week and a half ago, at 8:30 in the morning. Old Dominion dumped 17 skids of 1.1 million dollar air packs in my station. We still have three agencies that have got to pick them up. But when you put a Facebook post of what does 1.1 million air packs look like out there, they'll garner about 3,500 hits on a little over 48 hours. Like you said, they have been distributed to the agencies that pay, we have three partners of Loveberry County, they're still in the process of getting their money, so we still got air packs in the back half of the station. But that part of the last grant we were working last year is now here. If you guys ever want to entertain with the looking at the air packs, the guys already got them in service on trucks, they're wearing them, but please come on down and feel free to look at the new equipment we have. We started student ride lawns with Joe Coe, again, starting here next week, we will start having the student firefighter apprentices in the Fire Academy, driving law, Johnson County Community College Group, they are the ones that wear the red shirts, I mean, we see them out with our crews, so we had six or seven again to the stream sign up, apparently we are a, an attraction, they want to come over and ride with Edwardsville, because they get to sit there and not sit on the front bumper of the truck. We will get them their CPR cards for short, we will put them to work on a fire, we have one that worked out of last year's class, so this year's group have come in, already sent them into ready to work. We hope we catch a fire, and we urge the children to pick us up, the volunteer will be done. So that works kind of, we've kind of increased in that participation with our students. 6:20, the old cigarette pumper, we got paid for that truck, it is sold, it is still sitting up at school bar waiting on the team to come pick it up, but we have got check in hand, it's already cleared at the bank, and they have got item in hand, so the cigarette is sold, it's sold for $45,000, which we come in a little bit less than what our budgeted amount was for the truck, so we actually have a little bit of expenditure, a little bit of excess between the sale.
44,964.
Yeah, it's still below the price that you get, you just...
Yes.
And then Kramer Cruiser made an announcement here a week and a half ago, will be back August 25th of this year. We have a student station with some police officers, Tracy Culp from the school, a couple of firefighters sitting on board, help outs, market counters, who will be back in front of the council for STP in the next council meeting. Going from there, like I said, we still got some loose equipment, the air packs that didn't get grant funded, will be back in front of the council, but that's not all we've been doing for our department, and I'm trying to get all that done. 398 SDBA's owners, 191 air packs, 285 baskets, inventory accounted for for federal accounting purposes, so...
Is it August 8th the last Sunday for the riding?
Yeah. There's going to rain that night. But probably so, it seems to be.
Chief, are you going to do the golf?
I want to try, I'm not a big golfer, we did it that first year. One of the things I found out with golf is that's a very top dead meat, a lot of money involved on the front end to bring it on the back end. So I'm going to try a little game again this year, it's a never really geared thing, it might go. Some of my guys that are golfers have talked about bringing it to the field back again, but it's just been small.
Chief, something that I thought about, and I was going to bring this up to you, is something that we have here, what about Frisbee Golf Tour?
We've talked about that with that group, that party, those looking at that, trying to do that sponsorship, and another one at the, believe it or not, in the Kansas City metro area, and I was not aware of this, ham radio operators are a big thing with the FEMA and disaster community, but there's only two ham radio festivals, they all get together, have a swap meet and a sales meet, there's only two per year. I actually have one of my guys who has tried to sit there and start explaining that we may actually, one of those is sponsoring one here in Edwardsville, using our community center as well, bringing a third one in, because that's also another big item that goes as well with that. We've brainstormed a couple times, the Frisbee Golf is one, the Ham Radio Fest is another, motorcycle ride, bringing back another golf scramble, cookbooks, I know they're in a partnership with Ben Goermeister School, so there's been a lot of, a lot of progression going on with the data with the Grand Prix.
Chief? How's it work, Katie?
Just an update on a couple of the things that we talked about the last couple of months. The first one's maybe the 1516 South 24th Street, I don't know if we really updated that one recently. We did receive the proceeds from the insurance company, and so we have that sort of account, and we were before with demolitions, so we have a contract to hire, so those funds, we will not be using any funds to demo that house, we're using those from the insurance company. So that should be done hopefully within the next, maybe 45 to 60 days. We took bids, listed bids, and we went that route. The next one was the rest of the shelter in the park, City Park, we did go out and I solicited quotes from six companies for metal rooms, but we've had 12 snow and ice events from January 11th to March 11th, so I only have one quote, it was 12 over $50,000. One other company came out, saying it's going to give me another quote, so we'll update you on that, hopefully get it. Otherwise, we're just cleaning up after snow events, and we catch a bottle soon.
Thank you. Your turn.
Cut it out, Zach has it. Exactly. Yeah, just two quick things, there was some discussion with the cemetery board last, at our last meeting, so just to give you an update on some of their processes, they've got some draft language in front of them for a scope of work for, to go out to solicit, for firm to take over the grave management aspect of it that we discussed at the last city council meeting, so they've provided, provided draft language that they're going to review, and they provide me some feedback on it, and hopefully move forward, we'll move forward with essentially our two process for that grave management aspect of cemetery operation. There may be some additional discussion related to fees surrounding that, but we'll kind of cross that bridge when we come to it. And then the, they've also moved forward with the, one of their goals for this year is restoration of the Stony Point Cemetery here in Edwardsville, and they've kind of took that first step and authorized some funding for about $1,500 to do the staking and the surveying out there, so we know exactly the boundaries of that site, and after that, we'll organize a cleanup effort, and from what I've heard, we've got a lot of, we won't be one for, for community groups to come and help out with that cleanup effort, so that will be exciting. And one other thing, I know a couple of you were at Chamber Luncheon last week, I will be sending out the presentation that the Windott EDC group gave out, we presented that to you last week, and I will send it to all of the council.
Thank you. Hey, Chuck?
Tagging on that cemetery update, I called the Windott County Historical Society, I can't remember the gentleman's name, I spoke with him, and he is engaging the Windott County Parks and Rec, because they're involved in a lot of cemetery maintenance, and so I haven't heard back yet, I'm going to follow up on that in the next couple of days, that we may get some help from our county in regards to that cleanup and so forth, in fact, he was really excited about it, and actually, he was not even aware it existed.
Well, you really need to get ahold of the president of the Historical Society, which is Rebecca Medison, I have her email, so...
You'll forward that to me?
Yeah, we'll do that.
But is the guy at the Senate, or at the museum?
Yeah, the department.
I don't think that's who.
Chip Jennings?
I can't remember.
Well, because those people are museum staff, and it's different than the Historical Society.
Yeah, well, this guy said he had a contact in, into the Windott County Parks and Rec, and he was pretty excited about it. I also spoke with Mary Kimbrough, and she is, she's pretty excited about it, she's willing to, I'll put it in front of her family, and friends, and also, plus we have a church, I guess they've also some changes over there, so maybe kind of challenging, but she's pretty excited, we're really hoping to talk to her group of influence to become involved with that as well. So I think it could end up being a really nice community event, but it needs to be pretty quick.
Yeah.
And so we're talking, I think we're looking at the first part of April.
That is, that's currently the plan.
Before, before things start growing and crews start coming along.
Right, I know the surveying company wants to come out and get like a gig for, you know, a free gig for proud, so I'll keep it at that.
So also, is there any update on our BPU pilot question?
That would be a city attorney question.
Still trying to, I told, it's hard for me to pull the trigger when I don't have something that says they're 100% wrong, so trying to put together as much to show that it's inequitable, that it runs afoul of what the purpose is. So it's not a, it's not a clean statutory sort of thing, and no case law, but I can find it that runs directly with that, so more just putting as much in there as I can to show that it just runs afoul.
Right. I think that's enough.
Mike kind of alluded to this a little bit, I've been in contact after, you guys remember a few months ago, we got an email following a meeting with the county on, and the meeting was really just covering, what do we benefit from our countywide tax dollars, like how are Edwardsville and Barre specifically benefiting? One thing that they mentioned in their report was a mobile grocery site, in the report, it said they were going to have one in Barre, and so I just emailed, and I said, you know, I feel like since Barre has a farmer's market and multiple grocery stores, that Edwardsville might be a really good opportu, you know, might be a great site for that opportunity. Since then, I have talked from the, from Duck Lock, and the next mobile grocery site point person, and they basically said there was never any intention, it sounded like, in bringing it any further than, basically the closest to one would be Turner Rec Center in Kansas, and so I'm still following up to see if they would just consider us, we're that initiative, but just thought I'd bring it up to date, just to close anybody.
But they go to Barre?
Well, he said they weren't even that far. I don't know how it really made it into their report. I don't know how it really made it into the report, because and, and Mike was copied in on the emails, but what I understood is there wasn't even going to be a Bonner site, the closest one to us would be Turner Rec.
They only got one or, no more than three possible sites west of six-thirty-five. And then, to be honest, so, so our discussions have been, they keep talking about this community engagement and all these things, and we're like, well, how is that, where is this engagement, where does this come from? I mean, there's nothing we've ever heard of them. And effectively, I mean, from the purposes, well, we talked to these groups that are city-based, right, and they really didn't reach out. Apparently, there's no funding, I mean, I thought, so they're like, we get no funding from the county, we never have funding from the county. So, it, it's frustrating, I think would probably be the best word I could use to say, I mean, it's a great idea and we said, you know, I think we'd be happy to try to get some community engagement in March, all right, you know, but nobody's ever reached out and said, hey, we have this board, we got this thing, would you be interested in participating? I mean, until quite honestly, Council of Kmart reached out and said, so what's it take to get one in Edwardsville, I don't, we were on the radar screen.
And, and one thing that made it stick out to me was just in our community engagement on Facebook with our, connecting Edwardsville study, a lot of people had said, oh, I wish we had grocery access, I know we've had grocery stores down here, but a mobile site might be a good, a good opportunity for this community, so. Anyway, just to get everybody up to date on that, it doesn't look like I'm getting very far, but, but I'm at least asking the questions. So, and the only other thing that I had is I feel like it was so beneficial, I realize it took some time, but when we had a couple of people from our cemetery board here last meeting and just educating ourselves in, in what's going on, but also, I feel like there's a benefit to them feeling like they've been heard, because they spend so much time in serving our community and I just didn't know if it might be a good idea, like we had this brief presentation today and kind of a, what happened last year, what are we looking for this year, maybe we could offer that to our parks and our cemetery and maybe the planning to come, you know, ten, fifteen minutes once a year to just say, this, you know, what are you excited about, these are the great things we accomplished last year, this is what we hope to do. I just feel like it benefited us a lot and I feel like it's good for them to be heard.
I think it's actually within the COVID ward, it's just I may be wrong, that they're supposed to, and thanks to Kendrick, that they're supposed to be an annual report by, certainly by the cemetery board because of the financial issue, you know, just how they finance everything, but it's a good idea as far as, to see if you can, and staff and having, I mean, a foreign annual report or something like that.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask, no, I'm not. At the Chamber deal the other day, you asked the question of Kinder about the K thirty-two, and I don't think he gave you the answer that you wanted, you were talking more about what the development prospects were, I think, and didn't he say something like, it's just more of a drive-through or, I mean?
Well, so I asked, he gave a presentation on the status of certain sites within the county and as far as development goes, and my question was, what's been the interest along that K thirty-two corridor, something that all three communities have been engaged in studying over the last couple of years? And his response was more, it's a difficult site because the parcels are smaller, it's a, it's a.
Basically, he said it's undevelopable, is kind of what I took out of that.
It's harder to develop, it's, yeah, it's harder to develop, I'll leave it there.
I don't think I liked that answer. I think there's places it can be developed and.
Well, and to, to, to his credit, I mean, that's their, I'm not, and Mike probably speaks a little bit more, but as far as where their efforts are, where, why I E B C's best efforts are focused at, it may not be those smaller parcels along.
Well, what triggered that, my comment is kind of bad coming, but was what she just said about mobile grocery coming to, it's fifty-fifth street.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah. I mean, you know, there is county west of that and we are supposedly part of that county and we do pay our fair share to the big brother over there. And I think that they need to, you know, since we're paying dues and doing all that kind of stuff for them, maybe we need a little bit more effort on that, on thirty-two highway, instead of just kind of passing it off. So, I mean, that's the only, I don't, I didn't question whether I should have even said that or not, but that's kind of what I feel about it.
Well, I know I'll be meeting with Mr. Kendall in the next thirty days.
I mean, he really gave an excellent presentation, I really appreciated that, you know, and I learned a lot from that, but I didn't like his answer so much on thirty-two highway.
Sorry, I took a hint, Sam. Am I right, Sam?
I'll just, I'll tap and add on to all this discussion. I, I, I agree too that, you know, we are Windott County, I know there's three different cities, but Windott County as a whole, we don't share the resources, I don't think that we should, or the health department, the transportation, I mean, the list can go on and on, libraries, but I mean, I agree, I totally agree. And I don't know much about the local markets, I don't even know, it's two seconds, it is, whether who pays the taxes, I mean, I have a bunch of questions about that, but it'd be interesting.
Fortunately.
I will tell you that, that, you know, sexually, we'll, we'll take something like an RV and we'll put some coolers and fresh vegetables and the things that may not be readily available in the community, bring it to some site, it can become.
Like food trucks.
Yeah, but generally, fresh, fresh vegetables, fresh fruits, generally not meets those some, I mean, so it's generally things, you know, where people might not have ready access.
They'll have everything on the day, so for like moms with babies, they'll have milk and cheese and cereal and juice and things like that.
Another question, I don't know why, I had a neighbor to ask me, when a lost dog is picked up, I think it's, I mean, that's probably, um, the Department of Public Health.
It's a joint effort.
Is it a joint effort?
But, predominantly PD is the.
Because I see the police department post the heavy.
They respond at least if they're not in the transport.
Gotcha. So, nobody comes and gets it, where does that animal go?
If nobody comes and picks it up, so city personnel will respond and pick up the dog. If we don't locate the animal, it goes to the call by animal, it remains until it's adopted.
They have an adoption agreement.
And after, after they're three days there, they call and tell, and we take it to the unleashed admission, the unleashed adoption process, yeah. So, they stay there, it's a handful of days.
I do know how the process works, I had somebody ask me, so that.
They have us all, all hours for that, so.
Oh, I see, you're going to solve the problem.
Well, so, so if our personnel aren't available to transport the dog, our officers load them up in the cars.
Like that dog that got hit by a train or, I don't know.
So, for instance, last year, like one of my staffs, like our C S O picked up sixty-six animals and transported them.
Gotcha.
So, that's dogs.
But, you share the.
Oh, certainly, yeah.
Yeah, it's a, well, I would have heard.
It's probably, and I'm just, you know, somewhere a hundred point five, a hundred and fifty animals a year that, that we, that are, you know, picked up, taken at some point, I mean, sometimes it's just very short, but, but probably roughly in that number as far as what I, because it's animal cases, not including, you know, some dangerous animal or something, but where we pick them up, and as you might imagine, probably the vast majority of those, you know, get an owner pack. But, that's one of the reasons we do the very, very low-cost tags, because the goal should always be returning the animals to the owner, that's, that is the goal. Hundred percent way back to the run, if that would be wonderful, but.
That makes sense.
Probably sometimes, I mean, I don't know, you know, I rescued one time, had a dog cross four freeways and, you know, been gone six months and they put him at back in the paper one last time, and they're like, I had to tag your dog. Oh, it just found it in my yard, it was literally, I mean, it was, it was a little dog fifteen miles away, so I, I don't even know how to cop there, so. Thank you.
Hey, on that, I don't know a whole lot about that food truck kind of deal, grocery store, but if it was to sell here, would the POS be in Edwardsville?
The sale?
Yeah.
I would say yes.
So, that would generate sales tax dollars?
If, if.
If it was sold up.
I don't, I, I.
That's all right, I was just, I was just thinking.
Yeah, if it's a taxable sale and it earns here, transaction, then naturally taxes should get against under snatch.
Those are something I was thinking about, and then, the other thing is, I was just wanting, you know, every, we get these stacks, and I think we've mentioned this before, you know, all of these dead trees that we're killing every week, and I would just like to see if there is something that we could look into about getting this on laptops, computers that maybe that are just, I don't know, just for us that are up here, that, and I don't know if there, I don't know if there are grants out there, I don't have any idea. I'm just, I'm just thinking of a way that we could eliminate having all of these copies all the time, that we could, don't even know if it's possible, don't know what it would cost us, not sure, but would like to.
We can revisit, I, I will say we, at a number of years back, we started down that path and we had, at that time, a few that said, you know, I've got to have my art copy and give that, and it kind of died for a lack of want, I mean, so I think it's one of those things, once you decide, you have to really decide and go all in and say you're going to go to electronic agenda processes, and a number of studies do it, but if you're going to do that and then still turn around and make hard copies for everybody, then it kind of means the purpose.
Well, I would not, I would be opposed to making hard copies if we went ahead and electronic.
I just said throughout their LinkedIn there, in the last couple of months, or last couple of years, just did that, and so they've been through that process, which you might want to ask them about because it's just very low cost, probably a little bit bigger than this, being able to mark it up and keep it and keep your notes, so you can jump off of someone who's just gone through that process of what they've been able to use, and I think they got fairly inexpensive.
That is a good place to maybe start to see where.
Just to start with and see what their experience was, because I just remember all the discussions of some difficulties.
Some cities have done where they'll put monitors up there and, you know.
Right.
Kind of visit control here, you see it there, you know, do you want to pack it, so, I mean, at places where, hey, we're not going to have a monitor for them first, because I had one place, that's what they said they wouldn't do, and then we put all the monitors in, and then they were like, well, we don't like the monitors because we can't see any monitors. Okay, so we took all the monitors, this album went back to paper, but it's kind of like, well, probably not really wise, such a funny.
Well, I think as you see things, I mean, you talk about, you know, police departments and fire departments and places that are going away from paper, you know, then I think if, as long as we're talking about being, thinking forward, not proactive, not reactive, that's one of the, that's one of the things that we can explore.
And there are, quite honestly, there are a number of quality programs, software programs that are geared strictly around that whole agenda process, and we haven't explored it and, I mean, broadly see it at, you know, shows and, but we haven't really pursued it like because we haven't been really an interest thing, but there, there are certainly several solutions out there we could kind of step up and review. I'd be happy. You know, I don't know, I'm, I'm still thinking, I, I say.
Okay, I have nothing further to, to add, so, your turn.
Sure.